Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's Streetlight Committee, being held remotely in verse 43, section 43 of the Local Government's Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the debate which is being recorded. Should any member not be attending for any reason, could you please use the meeting chat to advise us? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the committee. If this is not possible, committee services officers will note their absence for the remainder of the event. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back again. You all members, please turn off your lights and if you do not speak then, avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers. Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if it's in good manners. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly resume the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point or ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion for amendment, please use the meeting chat that the convener will then invite you to speak. Where items are commuting or where there is disagreement expressed, the convener will talk to any member in a conference room to indicate that you are not using chat, otherwise the item will be removed. Please do not use the meeting chat or any other functions as those joining the meeting by calling cannot use the meeting chat and therefore will not be able to follow the procedure. With any protocol is not selected in the power, please do not use the meeting chat or any other functions. Although we are not making a different case, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face debate. Standard orders for compliance and proceedings and the terms of the Prince's Code of約will also apply in a normal way. Does any elected member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, I shall now ask committee service officers to take a roll call for the matter.
Convener is here. Hans McPhee.
Present.
Bailey Scott has followed here from Gareton.
Good afternoon, I'm here.
Henry O'Leary.
Yes, I'm here.
Councilor George.
Here.
Councilor Paul.
I'm here.
And Bailey Sawyer.
I'm here.
That takes us on to the first item of the agenda, which is declaration of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest? In that case, that takes us on to item two. Dundee City Council 2019-2020 Accounts and Audit. You have to go audit statements of accounts to the city council, the townable trusts, the Lord's Forces Dundee Charity Fund, the Dundee Trust, the external auditor report and the response to the external auditor report.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any officer looking to say anything, but if I can make a few comments just before we bring the questions in. I think that it's been a difficult year all round for every citizen in Dundee. It's been a particularly difficult year for the council and how it operates. I think that the officers have done a superb job in bringing the accounts together, given that most of the work has been done from home, if not all. I will not single out Sandy and George for any special comment this year that we usually do because they weren't that much of a help to me setting the budget for the Labour group this year, but that's just my sense of humour across the world. I'd just like to say that I think officers have done a great job in bringing the accounts together and given it's been such a difficult year. Let's hope that the vaccine that is promised comes into play soon and that next year we're in a much better position to be face-to-face at meetings to discuss matters. So I noticed that Bailey McPherson's looking to come in, so.
Thanks, thanks indeed, convener. And I would concur with your view of the exemplary and extreme hard work that Sandy, George and colleagues have put in to get to this position in what we all agree is a very challenging year. I have a question sort of about the external auditor's report, but I don't know how you're intending taking this. My initial questions have two, were in relation to 2A1, in other words, the actual main body of the report. And in relation to page nine, I'll come on to the external auditor's report perhaps later, you may want to take that later. In relation to page nine, I had questions about two of the overspends that are indicated. One was in savings that were not directly achieved but contained within the overall resources of the council. Now, that's quite a broad heading, but it's actually the best part of a million pounds, it's 0.839 of a million. And I was just really wondering if officers could give some indication of a breakdown as to what these savings not achieved but contained within the overall resources the council actually are. I have a second question, but I'll leave it there at this point.
An officer looking to come in on that one?
Thanks, convener, I'm happy to answer Bailey McPherson's question. So specifically Bailey McPherson, a large proportion of that relates to savings which were around the implementation of some of our digital services. So at the time the saving was taken, we didn't allocate it to services, but given the underspends that we've got, and this is predominantly around looking at more efficient ways and customer transactions, that saving was achieved within the services. What we're looking to do going forward is make sure that we allocate that from what we would call a corporate saving to service specifics to ensure that we don't have something similar coming forward. I think from memory it's around 600 to 700,000 pounds that relates to that specific saving which has been achieved. It's just not within individual services, but overall, the staffing complement and the efficiencies have been delivered and been through the Digital Strategy Group.
That's very helpful, Greg, thanks very much for that. My other question's again amongst the overspends and it's in relation to the LED street lighting electricity savings not achieved and the higher car park security costs of again nearly, in fact, almost exactly a million pounds. Now, we've rehearsed the discussions regarding the street lighting situation and I'm not wanting to rehearse them again today. I was just really wondering if we can get some assurance that both these aspects will be taken into account in future budgets, so we don't have, well, in the event ends up being an unrealistic expectation as to the level of savings that will be achieved. And I'm thinking, to be honest, in particular in relation to the street lighting.
Thanks, convener, and thanks Bailey McPherson. So if my memory serves me right, Bailey McPherson, unfortunately I don't have the report number, the street lighting overspend was captured within the 2021 report and we brought a report back to committee, so that has been put back into the budget. And relating specifically to the car parking and security costs, that obviously continues to be a cost pressure. Officers are looking at fundamental changes there around CCTV. So if we're not able to reduce that cost pressure, then that will be taken into account when we head into the 2122 budget process.
That's absolutely fine, grateful again for that. As I said, I do have a question under the external auditor's report, but maybe that's jumping the gun, so that I'll butt out as well.
I'll ask if there's any more questions on the first paper. I've maybe got to turn myself. Hans McPhee.
I'm happy to go after you, convener, if you want to ask a question.
Okay, it's again in relation to overspends and underspends. Given that on page 29 it suggests, but I think it's 23, we need to save somewhere in the region of 47.7 million pounds. I'm wondering how many of the underspends will be reoccurring? And in relation to overspends, if someone could give me a little more detail on the GAM and I suppose I should mention the LED lighting as well, because these were business cases that were presented to us and I'm wondering how in the growth accelerator model which was the GAM, we end up in a position where 1.45 million were not overspent.
Thanks, convener, so if I start off in response to your question and then I'll ask Mr Presswood to come in. In terms of the underspends, officers look at all of those underspends to see what we can capture when we're looking at future year budgets. You'll be aware that during the period of 1920 when we bought revenue monitoring reports to committee, we were very clear that we were taking actions around looking at discretionary expenditure and looking at ways we could promote development of staff through internal transfers. But we do look at these underspends and look at ways in which we can then translate them over into budget savings, so I can give you that assurance. In terms of the growth accelerator model, again, there is an update that's contained within the revenue monitoring report that's going to committee now at the start of December. And there obviously has been some challenges in terms of the targets within the growth accelerator model that have been compounded due to COVID-19. But if you're in agreement, I would just like to ask Mr Presswood to come in just to give scrutiny committee an overview of some of the actions that officers have taken to deal with that cost pressure and the actions that were taken.
Many thanks, Greg. In terms of the two specifics, as highlighted earlier, the street lighting position was addressed as part of the comprehensive report that we brought back in October 2019 about the overall city development financial position. And that highlighted the measures that we were taking as a management team to reduce what was, I think at that time, a 3.4 million overspend in city developments budget. And that combined both internal controllable measures within city development, but also highlighted some of the areas where there was a recurring overspend that simply could not be contained within city development. And as Greg's highlighted, that was in large part addressed during the process for setting the 2020-21 budget. And there was some one and a half million of additional funding made available for that. And we do continue to monitor the city development financial position very closely in conjunction with colleagues in corporate finance. And we have highlighted the actions that need taking, including specifically the GAM. The growth accelerator model has been under review for the past year. There are five targets within that and we have had a very strong partnership with colleagues in Scottish Government and Scottish Futures Trust. I think the Dundee growth accelerator model was the first in Scotland to be introduced. And there's obviously been a lot of lessons learned collectively around target setting and how we monitor and scrutinise spending. There has been a positive development this year in that we are very close to securing an agreement from Scottish Government to amend the targets where we've identified that targets are not feasible or don't accurately provide a good measure of economic growth. And we are very close to reaching agreement on amendments to them. And separately, we've obviously been highlighting the significant issues that COVID-19 is having on growth accelerator targets, particularly those relating to international visitors and to employment within the growth accelerator area. And so the outcome from those discussions is that it's likely that the bulk of the growth accelerator targets which can be met in the current year will be treated as having been met as a result of the COVID-19 possession. And then we're exploring further with Scottish Government how that will be resolved in future years if COVID-19 continues. There are two specific measures that we're focusing on around economic growth and it really became apparent during the course of the last financial year that the chosen indicator wasn't a practical indicator and had significant lags and significant difficulties in capturing the information and simply didn't measure economic growth in the city. So we are in discussions with Scottish Government about a replacement indicator that will be a more accurate way of summarising economic growth. The final piece of the GA jigsaw is target five, which relates to the office development. And as members will recall, we did reach agreement with Scottish Government as part of the tenancy agreement for the triple SA that that GA target would effectively be not treated as met because it was a public sector Scottish government target, but it would be allowed, the funding from the growth accelerator would be allowed to move on to the next office development and we're currently preparing a business case for consideration by members of that.
That's another one in relation to the growth accelerator model is that obviously appears to be sort of flaws within the initial business case. And what is Scotland, you know, the best value of course picks up probably were weak on business cases, probably revenues. So what's the overall loss of the overspend on the growth accelerator model? And the EFS grants, what's the makeup of the 1.45 million?
I think from my perspective, it's difficult to give a defensive position on that because we are still finalising the replacement indicators and negotiating around the office. So I think we would need some years before we can quantify that. There has been slower drawdown in the first couple of years of the growth accelerator than we would have anticipated. But there is the possibility that we can catch up some of that as part of the renegotiation. But as I indicated earlier, I think it was the first growth accelerator in Scotland. So from my perspective, it's inevitable there will be a process of learning lessons jointly with colleagues in Scottish Futures Trust and Scottish Government as part of the rollout to this new funding measure.
Is that a better mechanism than with less overspends? Or is that what you're trying to build into the Scottish government?
And as part of renegotiating targets, we are getting strong support from Scottish Government. So for example, because of COVID, it was highly unlikely that we would meet the international visitors target during financial year 2020-2021. And so Scottish Government are minded to treat that indicator as having been met. So there's an ongoing series of meetings which we hope to conclude via Christmas, which will give us greater certainty. But at the moment, I think we are doing as well as we can on growth accelerator.
I've got probably another question in the first paper. The IGB would appear to be overspending at 1.02 million and we are up to review the integration joint board scheme. So what political input is there in reviewing that scheme?
Comment on that, convener, if you can hear me okay, it's David Martin. The report on the IGB review is up, as you know, on the 7th of December, Policy and Resources Committee, so happy to talk in more detail about it then if that's helpful. But the review of the scheme is effectively a technical review and the more detailed review of the scheme will be done in consultation with statutory stakeholders, including the council, and will be brought back to elected members for review on completion. So members will both be consulted about the review of the scheme and then be asked to take a decision on the revised scheme as a key partner in that. So political scrutiny is assured on that basis.
Is there any intention to bring anything through all councillors beforehand to give them an indication of the pitfalls of the current scheme that you'll be trying to address as we earn in the overspend situation?
Absolutely, convener, I mean, the council is a key partner, a joint venture partner effectively in the IGB together with NHS T-Side. And it would be surprising if after five years of IGB, you know, schemes in place, if there wasn't some learning, an example of that would be the hosted services which are hosted by individual integration joint boards across T-Side. We were in the middle of, as you know, a major reconfiguration of the T-Side mental health strategy and there has already been a decision by ministers and supported by the council to take acute inpatient mental health services back into NHS T-Side. That's one example of a change. So all of the potential proposed changes will be discussed with elected members with committees, but also will be brought back to elected members for a view and for decision-making on any review to the scheme. The scheme has to be agreed by both the city council and by NHS T-Side before submission to Scottish ministers. So there's a very clear governance requirement to bring it back and fully involve elected members.
I've got one more question, convener, before I bring you in. On page 15, it mentions that we've written off some 34.78 million. I'm just wondering what the sort of breakdown of that is and if any of that relates to Dundee House? And if so, what proportion of that relates to Dundee House?
Thanks, Bailey McPherson, so I'm happy to answer that call. So on page 15, obviously it discusses and notes the provision for non-collection of various debts totalled 34.7, which is an increase of just over a million pounds. I think the level of detail that you're asking is something that if agreeable, I could provide to you out with the meeting because I'm not sure officers will have that level of detail on hand for today's meeting.
Okay, happy for that to be said. Just wondering what political input there is in relation to some agreement about what's written off? Given that, you know, council was, this council kept whole tax debt longer than most councils. So what do we have in relation to how politically, how do we agree what's written off?
Thanks, Bailey Keenan, so the write-off of debt is something through the scheme of delegated authority sits with the executive director of corporate services, so my post. So what happens throughout the year is officers review outstanding debt and try proactively to chase this up in insurance by maximising any help and support for people. We also have obviously a number of debt, particularly within council tax, that might be due to people who are deceased. So what we do is we try where possible to exhaust all possibilities for the collection of that debt. And sometimes that debt can be pursued for a long period of time or we're making arrangements for people given their financial circumstances. So just to give members of scrutiny the assurance that we try where possible to recover all debt before taking the view to write it off. And in the case of the majority of the debt, it will be reviewed by officers. Then it will be reviewed by senior managers like Jackie Capell. And then the final sign-off as part of the year-end process sits with myself who looks at the analysis of the debt, the level of debt, and in some cases, sampling to see what interaction the council's made to pursue that debt and then finally signing it off. And then obviously we're noting that level of sign-off within the accounts.
Is it the same for writing off assets in the council as well?
And so my understanding in terms of what I've outlined there is just in terms of the write-off of debt. I think if we were looking at the write-off of assets, I'm not 100% clear on what that process is. I'm not sure if George or Sandy have the answer to that. If not, then we could bring that back to and circulate to members.
We're just, I wonder how we dealt with the sale of Dundee House through the point of view. And in all we, we owned the asset, we spent 30 odd million renovating a building and we sold it for 20 odd. So there must be a considerable amount written off in some way, so I wonder how we go about doing that?
Yep, so I'm happy, convener, if it would help to pass over to George or Sandy who can give the technical response to how the accounting treatment for the sale and leaseback of Dundee House has been dealt with and I'm sure if needed Fiona Mitchell Knight or Bruce Crosby could confirm that, given it was part of the audit.
Convener, it's George Bansey here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks.
Yeah, and in relation to your first question, convener, there has been no write-off of the Dundee House asset because it's been sold. The asset is still held in the council's balance sheet and that's in line with the requirements of the particular nature of the agreement that was reached with Canada Life. So the Dundee House asset is still held in the balance sheet at around 23 million pounds, which of course is broadly in line with the sale proceeds that were received. I don't know if that answers your questions.
I suppose what I'm trying to find there is that we spent 30 million on it and owned the asset at the start. And we sold it for 23, what do you would do with the rest of the money?
Well, the, sorry, convener, the.
Just tell them to get some of it.
No, the fact is.
Just point start up.
Yeah. The fact that the asset is held in the balance sheet at 23 million pounds, convener, is a reflection of the accounting treatment of the original cost of the asset, which would have been 33, 34 million off the top of my head. But that asset gets written down over time because the asset is of course depreciating. So by the time we're eight or nine years down the line, the value that Dundee House is held in the council's books is only 23, 24 million.
Maybe speak to our line on that one, I'll bring the council meeting in.
Excuse me, thanks very much, convener. I wanted to go back to the page nine, the LED street lighting and more about the process because I know Mr Presswood has dealt with some of this. But I mean, I think it's the case that often officers rightly are not very happy or, you know, that their work might be questioned in committee. However, when we see a situation like this where a, you know, where a plan that we were told would save money actually hasn't saved us money and hasn't worked out, you know, and I know Mr Presswood's mentioned that it has been dealt with. I think there's a broader issue as well about can we have, can we as councillors have certainty in the future that any business case that's put before us is as robust as it can be? Understand that at particular times around COVID, but I mean, I think the issues that are in front of us, business cases that are put to us should be robust, stand up and should deliver what they say they're going to do. Because, you know, frankly, officers take exception if we ever question that they're not going to say what they do. And then when it happens that they don't say, that doesn't do what it was intended to do, we're meant to just forget about it and walk on and just hope for the best in the future.
Convener, can I make a comment on that? That's okay. Thanks for the question, convener, I mean, two assurances really. One is that there is absolutely no problem whatsoever with elected members querying officers' business plans and our, you know, best estimates sometimes are thorough business cases and others. And indeed, that's why reports come to elected members for scrutiny and often, you know, further work on those. On the particular issue of the LEDs, we have in fact brought a report back to tackle that particular issue and elected members, I think thoroughly debated it. And to the point you make about the best value audit that we just considered recently at Policy and Resources Committee, it was very clearly stated that the council was a mature authority, it was willing to learn from its experiences and this is no different. So recommendations that Fiona Mitchell Knight in fact spoke to at Policy and Resources Committee included making sure we're a more systematic and thorough process on capital projects. I would suggest that's also major revenue in policy changes too. So to answer your question, one, we have no problem at all, in fact, very much welcome scrutiny by elected members on issues like this. And secondly, we will do our level best to use current state of guidance. Audit Scotland, for example, as you know, have a thorough and still very up-to-date policy approach and recommendations on option appraisal, which we're using increasingly and will use systematically now. That is in fact in the action plan that we agreed just a few days ago. So you can be assured we'll use our best endeavours and all the skills and expertise we have to give the best possible case in front of elected members on any capital project or any policy change.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions on this report? Is that the report agreed? Okay, thank you. Okay, next is the charitable trust, is there any questions on the charitable trust? Or is there any officer looking to come in and introduce the report? Bailey McPherson?
My question was really about the.
My question was really about the Lord Provost Charity Fund and it was really the comment on page 247, which is the external auditor's report, about the fact that there was a situation that authorisation for payment of grants could have been made purely on a verbal and not with no documentation. I was just really wondering, I thought that was quite an unusual sort of situation. We would normally expect documentary evidence of any transaction. I was just really wondering if I could have an indication as to how that has come about? And I assume we now have, as the agreed management action indicates, a situation where we do ensure that there's always a documentary evidence of any transaction that's occurred.
Someone coming in on that one?
Thanks, Convenor, so happy to come in. So just to give the assurance that going forward, specifically relating to the action, we'll ensure that there is written confirmation regarding the approval of funds. Regarding the question from Bailey McPherson regarding how that could have happened with the verbal improvement, that's something that I would need to look into, the specific examples, Bailey McPherson, and then come back to you. But please be rest assured that formal written approval before funds will be released has been implemented and will continue to be followed going forward.
Thanks for that. The fundamental point, I'm sure we would all agree, is we would always expect to see documentary evidence. So I think it would be useful to know how, you know, what was the extent of the problem? I appreciate it's, it may be an isolated incident or an isolated fund, if you like, in that respect. It'd be useful to know how this could have come about. I'm grateful for the assurance it's been resolved, but it would be useful, and not just to me, but to all members of the committee, just to get an indication as to the extent of this and how big a problem it used to be, as it were, and an assurance that it doesn't exist elsewhere.
Happy to do so, Bailey McPherson.
Grateful for that, thank you.
Any other questions, Bailey McPherson? Councillor McGreevy?
Yeah, can I just ask, I know it maybe probably is beyond the scope of this meeting, but the Dundee Trust, which I think has, if I'm reading this correctly, has no assets. As I understand it, I think when it was pulled together, a number of other small trusts, the intention was to distribute the funds and then, I think, collapse the trust or something like that. Is anybody in a position to tell us what the plans are for that? Or is it, or do we, do we need to take that up with councillor Duncan, who's the chairperson of it?
Thanks, Convenor. So again, I'm happy to come into that. I think there's ongoing discussions, Councillor McCready, about the future of the trust. So that's something that I'm happy to speak to Councillor Duncan about and indeed pass back to members of scrutiny. Or if you wish to contact him yourself, then, you know, happy that that happens. But officers are considering options available at this point.
But can I just check, is my memory correct in terms of the intention when a number of smaller trusts were brought together was that it would distribute the funds and then close the trust? Is that right or is that...
Please go and respond.
Thank you, Convenor. Councillor McGreevy, thanks very much for giving those good questions. There will be a meeting for Dundee Trust called in the not-too-distant future to discuss the future of the trust, given that the trust is an organisation separate from the council. We can hopefully with details during the course of this public meeting, but we're very happy indeed to be in touch with the centre to explain those proposals.
That's very helpful, thanks.
Can I maybe ask a question myself? In relation to page 231 of the auditor's report in relation to financial arrangements of Dundee House, probably led me to ask the questions that earlier, but perhaps someone could explain that to me in some detail.
Thanks, Convenor. So I'm happy to ask Mr Flight or Mr Manzey to come in to answer your specific question there. I think that's in relation to exhibit three on page 231 and regarding the financial arrangements for Dundee House. So can I ask Sandy or George just to find further clarity regarding the significant finding from the audit, please?
Okay, yeah, I'll kick off and then pass on to George for more detail on it. So basically, in terms of the financing arrangement for Dundee House, obviously there is an annual payment that we make to Canada Life. We'd model the profile of that in terms of how that would be split over interest and principle. When that was discussed with Audit Scotland, they came up with a slightly different proposal in terms of that, which we have now implemented. That proposal meant slight adjustment between principal and interest, but as it feeds through the accounts, there's actually no impact on the bottom general fund balance. I'm not sure if George wants to update further or whether Audit Scotland want to explain why they suggested the suggestion they made.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Convenor. The only thing I could add to that is that, just to emphasise, it was a reallocation of the existing payment to Canada Life for the year. It was a case of moving money between different heads in the accounts. There was no impact on the bottom line and we're now confident we've got a model going forward that will provide the right answers at the unaudited stage of the accounts.
I have to put that into the data of accountancy that you guys keep to yourself. I wonder how it didn't make a difference to the bottom line, but some of these things I just have to accept, so to put it quite understanding. Appreciate your answer. Is there any further questions? Can we ask if the auditors want to make any comments, see as it came along with you?
Hello, Convenor, Fiona Mitchell Knight here. I'm the appointed auditor. Yes, it's usual for me to present findings from our audit at this stage to the committee. They'll just run through a brief summary of it. And we do this at this point in time, prior to you approving the accounts, so that you can be aware of your audit opinions that have been reached on the accounts and our wider findings on the audit. We have quite a package of letters and reports from us there. So pages 203 to 220 are the formal letters which confirm our audit opinions on the council and its group and the trust fund accounts. And I'm pleased to say that they are all what we call key unqualified audit opinions and that in our opinion, they present a true and fair view of the financial position of the council's group and its trust. I'll move on to our annual audit report, which is at page 221 it starts. And I'll reflect on the key messages on page 224 first of all. And then once I've finished running through the findings from the council, I'll maybe ask my colleague Bruce Crosby to come in, who can talk about the approval of the funding through the trust, so the grant authorisation issue that was raised earlier. Just in terms of the key messages in our annual audit report, this is a summary of all of the findings from our audit this year, including the best value audit. And many of you will have seen me be involved in the discussions earlier in the week around the best value assurance report. And so I'm not going to repeat those here, but the first part of the key messages summarises the results from the best value assurance report and reflects on the fact that the council has now considered the report and agreed an action plan in response to the recommendations made in that report. And we will monitor those actions going forward. In terms of the accounts, as I say, we concluded a true and fair audit opinion. We have made what we call an emphasis of matter reference in the account's opinion relating to the value of the asset. Now, the assets have been valued on an appropriate basis, there is no issue there, but because of the impact of Covid this year, there is a greater degree of uncertainty around the valuation of assets, or there was at the end of March. The council's disclosed this and so we feel it's appropriate just to bring it to your attention as it's such a significant matter. But as I say, the council has appropriately accounted for the assets. Moving on to, oh, just point 10. So we're reporting today a little bit later than would normally be the case. We normally sign off the account at the end of September. And I'd just like to give credit to the finance team, George and Greg and the rest of the team of being able to produce the accounts and they produce for audit on time. However, challenges of carrying out the audit remotely meant that the audit has to be longer than would normally be the case. However, the government revised the deadline to sign off the account to the end of November, so we're very much in line to meet those deadlines. So credit to the finance team and to my audit team in getting to that stage. In the key messages, reflect on the strong financial management in the council and the overall services within budget. And we say that internal controls operated effectively in the year. The comments on financial sustainability in the council and of course, the plans into the medium and short term have been impacted by Covid. And we reflect in our report and include an action point that as things become clearer, council obviously need to build its recovery plans in response to Covid into its financial plans, both short term and medium term. And of course, the transformation programme in the council will be critical to ensuring that you can deliver on your aspirations for improving council services going into the future. In terms of governance, we reflect on the changes that have been made in the governance arrangements in response to Covid and we're hopeful that the council's appropriate response to the pandemic. And we've said that the council has therefore appropriate effective governance arrangements during the year. In our report to exhibit three, as has already been pointed out, I think it's page 11 of our report, we refer to a couple of minor changes that were made to the account. So on the use of reserves and on the financing arrangement for Dundee House, the changes were made by the council and it had no effect on the bottom line in the accounts. So very good result, very few changes for council. Now just bringing to your attention the action plan to our report, so that's a pending one. There are only two actions, the first related to the grant authorisation in the charity fund and the second one relating to the need to revisit financial plans in response to Covid. Of course, that isn't a surprise to the council and council had arrangements in train already to do that, obviously very significant, so we're flagging that in our plan there. I'm now just going to hand over to my colleague Bruce Crosby, who can make talk about the grant to authorisation in the charities fund. And then once he's done that, I'm happy to take questions on any of the reports or letters that are part of our package. Thank you. Bruce?
Bruce? Thanks very much, Convenor. Regarding the authorisation for the trust, it wasn't the case that the documentation for the awards weren't there, it was simply an authorisation issue. So they had supporting documentation, but the authorisation process hadn't been there. I don't know off the top of my head at this point about the scale, but we'd be quite happy to have a look at our files and get back to Greg with some detail about that. And happy for that to be included in his response to councillors in respect of that particular question.
Thanks for that, Bruce. So any other questions? I notice Councillor McGreevy, you need to come back in again?
Please, Convenor. Got a couple of questions, if that's all right. Can I, yeah. My questions are on, first one is on page 234, paragraph 49. I think it's page 14 of the external audit report about city development, but it says city development has reported overspends against budget in recent years. And I know that Mr Presswood has dealt with some of that and he's already mentioned, he already dealt with some of it today. I suppose one of my questions is that we are facing, when we get round to looking at it and the revenue monitoring for this financial year, a continuing overspend in city development. And I just wonder whether auditors or council officers have got a view on whether we're getting the budget correct for the city development department, whether there's anything we should do differently and whether it is, you know, acceptable to have the external auditor seeing in the nicest manner, I'm sure, but pointing out that city development has reported overspends against budget in recent years. You know, I mean, I think it's something we should be looking to solve and to make sure that the budget reflects, the budget reflects the needs and indeed the spend of the department. Because obviously, when you're setting a budget collectively, you know, we are making some difficult decisions and it's important that we make those with the, you know, with the best information that we've got. And it would appear that over a number of years, that might not have been the case. Thanks, Convenor.
Good. Good to get onto that. David Martin?
Thanks, Convenor. I think that the point that Councillor McCready makes about making sure that budgets are right-sized and sensible and are based upon, you know, realistic base budgeting is a fair one and it is one that I think you would expect us to be trying to address. I think the city development budget in recent years, I think as members know, just to cast back, I mean, first of all, it's one of the budgets of the council that's open to a lot of external pressure, so building warrant fees, planning income, rental levels, the performance of the economy, there's a fair degree of flux that applies to a large chunk of the city development budget, which is one of the reasons for the variability. I think the important point is that when variations are seen coming, that good quality revenue budget reporting actually reports that to elected members, allows them to scrutinise and has decent explanations as to what's actually going on. And I think if we look back over the past three years, elected members, I think have been pretty thorough in asking for occasional periodic deep dives into some of the issues, looking very closely at our capital programme and the extent to which fees are generated in projects. And I think that certainly from my point of view, I think the monitoring of variation and the explanation of variation is reasonably good, but it doesn't detract from the point that Councillor McCready makes, that of course, we would want to have realistic budgets in place. And we've been working hard over the past few years to get the city development budget into a position where it does just that. And I'm certainly confident that as we move into 2122 and consider the revenue budget will be as close to that as we possibly can be and take account of the monitoring of budgeting from a, as realistic a budget as possible. The only caveat I would put on that is that we just don't know yet how Covid's going to affect us and what recovery will look like and over what period of time that will take place. And that is an unknown for us, but we can of course monitor the impact and report back to elected members thoroughly. And of course, that challenge doesn't just apply to city development, it applies to any other income budget in the city. So I think the monitoring's there, the principle of trying to get base budgeting in place that Richard identifies is absolutely fair and we'll do our best to ensure that happens in the case of the city development department.
Does the call any of you want to be taken as well?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. It was just in addition to what Mr Martin had said there, that committee has taken the decision in recent budgets to allocate additional money to city development and to ensure that property budgets are working towards the position. One of the challenges with city development, as Mr Martin has outlined, is its reliance on external income. And as Mr Presswood spoke about earlier, particularly with models that we've taken forward, it is subject and has been subject to flux, particularly around Covid. But it is something that we will continue to look at when we're bringing forward proposals to committee and looking at financial projections for 2122 and include that within options that elected members will have to make some decisions on. Thanks, Convenor.
Councillor McGreevy, do you add to your question?
Well, yeah, I thank the officers for that. I'm reluctant to compare any of the officers to Donald Rumsfeld, saying that we've got known unknowns there, but I'm sure they know who they are. But I mean, I think there is a serious, there's a serious point there and I, you know, I hope that we can get to some kind of solution because, you know, I think at the end of the day, I think all of us, no matter what our political persuasion, are making decisions at budget time in order to get to a balanced budget that we're probably not entirely happy with. And I think it's important that we do have the best information possible on that basis. My second question on the auditor's report was on 243, page 243 of our papers around the stuff around fraud and error. I think particularly paragraphs 93 to 97, I think. Just, I see that, I see what's set out in paragraph 93, which, you know, is saying that the internal audit... that the internal audit looked at stuff in June 2019 and that they're going to report back to us soon, I think is what the report says. Just think it's important that we've got some clarity that that will happen sooner rather than later because, you know, I hope that the actions have been taken, you know, over a year after they became apparent. And just in terms of paragraphs 96 and 97, I think it's important that we get, that we get a report on what's mentioned in paragraph 96 and 97. I think it's important that we look to learn lessons and that we, you know, we make it clear to people that there is, that we will be very strong collectively on fraud because, you know, this council's going to face some, you know, as we saw in papers that we're going to committee on Monday night, the council's going to face some, you know, some really challenging financial situations. There are people who are probably going to suffer in this city and, you know, we can't have people misappropriating the funds of the council that are meant to be used for the good of the citizens of Dundee. So we need to be very, very strong on that and send a very clear message. And I know officers and elected representatives will do that, but I just want a bit of clarity as to when we might expect a report on that. Thanks.
Pamela, you want to answer that?
Sorry, give you a, maybe start and maybe Mr. Colgan might wish to comment on the IT issue. I think to completely share councillor McCreedy's views on a zero tolerance approach to fraud and the importance of thoroughly reporting in public and to elected members when on occasion we find that we have a challenge in that and that is something that as elected members know, that view is shared by myself, the whole management team as well as every elected member. So, you know, we, in the context and the matters referred to in 96 and 97, I think as councillor McCreedy knows, we'll bring a report back to you as soon as we can on this, that the issues that have been identified in those paragraphs are what's holding that up and that report will be thorough, full and, you know, detailed in terms of lessons learned and our findings. So just to give you that reassurance, if Mr. Colgan wants to comment on the IT one.
Yeah, thanks, David, and thanks, Convenor. So just in relation to councillor McCreedy's question on paragraphs 93 to 95, obviously we have brought a report back to scrutiny committee, which gave an update in terms of the actions. And I'll just ask Pamela now to confirm her timescales for that future report, which I believe will be coming to scrutiny quite shortly. So I don't know, Pamela, if you can just give an update on when you'll be reporting back to scrutiny in relation to that specific point.
Thanks, Greg. Yeah, that's what I was going to say, just that the annual progress review exercise is due to be reported to scrutiny committee on the 9th of December. So you will receive an update as part of that on areas that are mentioned there.
That's very helpful, thanks very much.
There appear to be any more questions? Can I ask if all the reports are approved?
Great.
Okay. And obviously I'd like to thank you all for your time and the auditors for their efforts and again, obviously the staff for the efforts that they've put in over this period, particularly at home and managing these reports. Emily, as you said, and the green sheet. Thanks for your time.
Thanks.
Thanks, Convenor.
Convenor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Convenor.